All kinds of things to make it through. Oh, hold on, it's it's on this. Hey Devon, we're gonna try my other page on my other phone and see how that works. Alright, we're trying the other page on the other phone. Please work, please work, please work, please work. Come on. We got this. Yes, 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 I got the request, I got the request. Man, I'm just like, woo. Glad to see you, man, glad to connect, thank you. Everybody on the on the other page, go to my main page without the underscore, we're we're live with Devon at the main page. Thank you.
Cool. How you doing, brother?
Um, been doing so good, you know, what it is is, you know, as we gain charge and gain momentum, I'm having to, you know, stick to, I'm at the state, I'm having to stay aligned more to maintain this level of abundance and this level of, you know, responsibility and 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 it's responsibility and it's power and and with great power comes great responsibility, right? I'm just not to quote Spider-Man, but I'm finding that alignment there. So, um, so we've been doing a Bretherian series on my YouTube, it's been getting a lot of momentum, it's kind of like we're just in the first twenty pages of Man's Higher Consciousness Hilton Hotma, so it's basically groundbreaking for a lot of people.
Yeah.
You know, it's the first time the idea that you could subsist purely on the prana. And so now it's time to, it's it's basically time for, um, what's called practical application. Right, like we've been talking about it, we've been talking about the power of it. So I want to give people a taste of of that alchemy breathwork, which is like, you know, the most, one of the most potent forms of breathwork that there is.
Beautiful, thank you for saying that. Um, I think I called you the other day, and the reason why I called you, uh, because you put in the group chat, uh, in the urine therapy group chat about uh, doing Ayah and doing looping. I wanted to ask you more about that. What was your experience on it? And I'll I'll go into my experience of why I didn't end up doing it.
Okay, great, yeah, so what I felt like was that the the urine caused the the medicine to pass through my system faster.
Oh.
I feel like it diluted the psychedelic part of it. Because like when you bring the perspective that, you know, some some perspectives are like, these plants are just like, like some people say they're just toxins that we have to detox, right? And then and that comes with different medicinal aspects, like this plant wakes up certain things, certain a certain deep like uh, the big part of ayahuasca is it causes people to throw up a lot. But for me, I I ate fruit for like the thirty days up until the session, so I didn't throw up anything, I was just on fruit and and urine. So my my physical body was clean, but I did have a lot of emotional detox, like I cried my eyes out, like serious crying, like I
That's a form of purging, anyway, it doesn't have to be throwing, you know, crying.
Purging, it was all emotional and and I and I never cried that much before, as a man trying to be a gangster, you suppress a lot of emotion, right? So for me, that was a great awakening, but I do, I can say that because we did two days. And on the first day I looped and then the second day I didn't, so the first day was like really diluted, it was a lot weaker. Yeah, so that's that's kind of what happened, so, but yeah.
Okay, cool, yeah, um, uh, when I took it, I got so deep in the breath and, um, uh, apparently I was breathing into my bones and apparently, um, I uh, someone added me into a clubhouse and they call it ceremony integration, my friend Bryant. Uh, he added me in there and then I gave my whole story on it. And then there was one person who was practicing Tai Chi for over twenty plus years. And he asked me, hey Devon, and I know him too, his name's Ben, um, I know him very well, and uh, he goes Devon, have you ever practiced organ breathing, organ like your organs? And I'm like, oh yeah, I I practice that, you know, I go through them one by one. Uh, you know, I I practiced that, he said, well, did you do that before? You uh, did the ceremony or going into it? And I was like, no, I and he's like, that's interesting, you literally, um, were literally doing some bone breathing. You were literally breathing into the bones and that that takes, you know, lots of practice to do, the way I was describing how um, the breath was fluctuating in my body on Ayah. Right, I literally did breathwork from ten PM all the way to six AM on ayahuasca.
Oh, I bet.
And and it, you know, it's so, it gave it gave me so so many, um, so much confirmation in terms of how I saw things were breathing in terms of quantum breathing and what I teach. So I saw that even more, I was like, oh, confirmation after confirmation after confirmation, just seeing all the visuals, I was like, wow. This confirmation after confirmation. And, um, just from people hearing me breathe, you know, some people were also crying, and they said, just from me hearing you breathe like that, I've never heard someone breathe that deep or breathe like that. Even uh, the shaman at the time thought I was dying, he was like, I can't tell if he's going deep or is he
I definitely want to go to ayahuasca session with you. You can, you and the shaman can run your your own session one time.
Yeah, I I was I was part of, I was actually part of the retreat, I was in charge of doing the breathwork, so, um, uh, yeah, I I we let off, we started off with the breathwork, then we all set our intentions and then, uh, the ceremony began. And uh, one by one, we went up to get the medicine, of course, and uh, I went straight into the breathwork. And, um, yeah, it was very powerful how synchronistic the ayahuasca came to me, I literally had so many precursors of alright, if I'm doing Ayah, you have to come to me in this way, and it was literally hitting every little thing. All the way to the point where I was even messaging, um, uh, like other Bretherians, be like, hey, have you ever done this on this, when you were like fully Bretherian and blah blah blah?
Yeah.
And it was just, they were all hitting me with confirmation after confirmation, I was like, alright, I'll I'm I'm doing it. Finally did it. And you know, um, Ayah, it's, I don't look at it as plant medicine, it is literally a technology. And you you have scientists today, right now saying water is a technology, right?
Right, right. Yeah.
So, you know, and ayahuasca out of all the plant medicines, you know, you can try to synthesize and try to recreate what weed does and all the other plants, but you can't do, you can't do that with Ayah, which is very interesting in itself. So it goes to show you what in the world and how in tune um, our ancestors were in terms of taking this bark of a tree, mixing that with that and boiling it to a certain temperature and then brewing it to not kill you.
That is a form of high technology. Tech, that is a form of advanced, we 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 think advanced has to look some sort of external way. But when you see the intricate ways that they can use the plants to journey into other world, this is high tech.
Exactly, just how I view breath is a technology in itself. Same thing applies to Ayah, in my opinion, in that sense.
Yeah. And 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 with that comes, again, great power, great responsibility, like this this thing is a powerful thing, it's not a party drug, it's not like a trendy thing, you don't jump in because everyone's doing it. But, um, obviously, if you go into it with purpose, you can get life-changing, you know, benefits and results and connections. Um, so, I mean, I felt the grass growing outside when I took it out, it was just like this, this this confirmation, where you're saying of connection, so to speak, like you, like if you ever felt like you weren't connected to everything around you, then that's probably a sign to go on the ayahuasca trip.
There you go. Yeah, guys, a disclaimer, don't force yourself into it, let it come to you in a harmonious way.
Oh, yeah, you know, the way the way I got called to the trip was people that I worked with that I never even knew were into it invited me to their trip, like I always coworkers with them for like two years and they're like, hey, we think you're a really good candidate, I mean, we think you're a good fit, have you ever thought about it? And I was like, wow, yes, a lot, I have thought about it a lot, but the opportunity never came and then it was just kind of like a alignment thing, is exactly what you're saying, so.
Exactly. Yeah, so let's get into the breath. How's how's your breath journey going on?
Uh, so this is, this is where I'm at, like, you know, up until until you open a school or certification, I'm gonna be the first student there, but you know, until then, I I signed up for just a certification for breathwork instructor.
We, um, we're actually, I'm working with somebody right now, have a new site popping up. Um, that that'll come very, very soon, maybe then, you know, by the end of this year, it will pop up. Yeah, people have been asking for it, so.
So I'm I'm getting something for a foundation, so I can help facilitate better what I already do, so. So that's where I'm at, and also that happens to be the best way to 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 commit more, right, is when you have to now teach others, it's like, okay, now I'm really in it, so. So, yeah.
Fire. Alright, so, uh, yeah, what you, what you feeling today? And, um, I'll I'll go into, you know, maybe go into something that we haven't went over.
Yeah. What I wanna, what I wanna go into is the power of nasal breathing, the power of nitric oxide, kind of like a a primer for people who have never tapped into that idea and to that power, so however you wanna you wanna, um, wake people up to the power of breathing through your nose and creating that that, um, that nitric oxide and and, you know, uh, or in other words, another form of hydration in the morning, if you haven't eaten yet or drank yet, this is like a form of hydration, right?
Exactly, so nitric oxide is basically the building block of your whole entire body. Um, uh, it can only be created with the nose, so, um, you'll notice people who um, unfortunately have nasal problems will tend to age a lot faster than the average human being. And that, it goes straight to basics in terms of nasal breathing, you know, that's how much it impacts uh, someone's life. So when you breathe more efficiently, eh, you know, the the less you, less you need in terms of oxygen, because uh, the building block of our whole body is actually carbon, and literally ninety percent all the way to hundred percent, literally ninety percent of your atoms has carbon, carbon molecules attached to it. So the more carbon you build up in your body, because it fluctuates up and down. Um, the more carbon you build up, the easier it is for you to take even the slightest little air, that oxygen, and have it run more efficiently versus, um, quote unquote, over breathing with the mouth in and out. Because there's a lag time with the mouth, even going up to the brain for quote unquote oxygen in that sense.
Yep, I feel that. I feel that.
Exactly, yeah. Um, you're you're, you, uh, have you, have you met Dane? Have you seen Dane's testimonial with his deviated septum?
No.
No? So, um, Dane has a deviated septum and, you know, we've we've done certain breathwork just for that. And, you know, he has to, unfortunately, he has to wear a mask for work. Um, but he can breathe a lot better now doing the breathwork behind the mask. And we found O two saturation to be a lot higher when you're breathing more efficiently via nose, uh, if you have to wear a mask. So this type of breathwork is definitely for these times, because many people are breathing mostly with their mouth when they have the mask on, most likely, right?
Something that people can, like, what if people will have to work with a mask all day, what what's something that they can do, you know?
So you would, you would be mainly focusing on, um, backflow, and backflow comes from um, breathing in like the threes, and we'll do something different, um, with the backflows, because uh, some people here are familiar with the threes that I do, so the inhale three. And we're gonna be doing a hmm, a real side release.
Okay.
And I want to go over the main locks, if you're not familiar with alchemy. The main lock is your eyes gazing up towards your third eye. And the next one is tongue stretched to the roof of the mouth, soft palate to the roof. Uh, the next lock is your pelvic floor, and you only want to squeeze that only on the exhales.
Got it, got it.
Alright. Exactly, lightning crack. Uh, we actually do have, um, thunder breathing. Green monster. Uh, that was actually my photographer, by the way, that, uh, that came and and filmed uh, the beautiful sound healing event, you guys are gonna see that soon. Yeah, but, uh, we did, we did a, um, a mockup of that, uh, for the members group last night. Um, I'm gonna post that in the WhatsApp group, Gerald, you should, are you in the WhatsApp group?
Yep, I am.
Okay, cool, yeah. Um, I'm, I think I really want to do more of those. Because, you know, it's so beautiful hearing your own breath on repeat, yeah, I'm telling them to use it for, uh, subliminal breathwork, just played in the background. Just hearing your own breath is just really, really powerful.
Oh, it's it's a signal for you.
Eh, exactly, exactly.
Okay.
That that's the power of subliminal breathwork, and I, I think I'm the only one putting out content like that for subliminal breathwork, and there'll be a lot more, I have, uh, this DJ Monk that, uh, that does beatboxing and, um, sutras. If you heard the Heart Sutra, that was, um, that was him. And I was doing the the constricted breathing in the background where it was kind of slow and rigid.
That's what's up, so so we're talking about music with the breathing in the background, kind of programming people, you know?
Exactly, yeah, there there's intention behind there as well.
Yeah, yes, yes.
It, you know, this is language beyond, uh, beyond words.
Really, it's fighting fire with fire. You know? Uh, so WhatsApp group, I think it's a private members group, right?
Yeah, it's it's a, it's a members group, so, um, that that comes, what you get is over a hundred plus videos you've seen yourself in the members group on the on the private page. Um, also, you get all the digital downloads that I will ever put out online, you'll get the full version of them for free, you don't have to pay extra. So, I give so much value, Joe.
No, I know, I know, and 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 for me, it's like, just like the best subscription service you could ever sign up for, because you got this constant influx of like music, videos and content, so I mean, I recommend people join the Alchemy Breathwork Members Group. Because, I mean, as a teacher, as somebody who's playing on teaching the breath, I'm in a good place, I feel good, I feel like I'm in a good place. You know what I mean?
Thank you, brother.
Yeah.
Alright, so. Yeah, we're gonna do some serotonin breaths with threes. Um, so that sigh, I want you all to smile, only on the on the exhales and the sigh, so it's inhale three. And then you're gonna go back to neutral when you do the inhales. So I call it serotonin breath, because it's smiling. Um, you may even taste, you know, people, um, that have been consistent with this are really getting the taste of what melatonin tastes like, what DMTs taste like, what the copper is tasting like, I'll I'll put out a testimonial of that uh, with one of my Russian clients, and she's finally getting the the difference of taste when it comes to producing that chemicals, literally only in your mouth, you know? People don't realize this, but we have more receptors in our nose, that taste when you're eating, that's mainly coming from your nose, not your mouth.
Right.
The nose knows.
One one more, one more note, when when we're sighing and exhaling, we're squeezing our root, right?
Right, exactly.
Had to get that down, right?
Right, so you, a little quick thing is, uh, you can literally take a bunch of onions, sniff the onions, and then be eating something like watermelon, and you'll be mostly tasting onions.
That's crazy. But that's, that's true, so, so we, so we can get sensitive enough to where we know what neurology, what chemicals we're releasing, and we can taste that, I mean, that's, that's goals right there.
And, uh, breathwork around, I think, uh, eight to ten PM-ish. Uh, that's when melatonin gets released in the body, you know, that's time to quote unquote, get ready for bed, things like that. That's, that's a powerful time to do breathwork, um, especially, um, uh, nasal breathwork in that sense. And, you know, you can definitely taste what melatonin tastes like around those times, so. Uh, also with a cleaner palate, you know, you can definitely taste the difference in that sense.
Giving up salt and stuff, right, then you got, get sensitive enough to 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 taste it, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Alright, let's get into it, so we're gonna be doing threes with serotonin breaths, and then I'm gonna say regulate the breath. Uh, when I say regulate the breath, uh, you're going to inhale and exhale silently where you can't hear the breath at all. Uh, go at your own pace. Don't think I'll have the sunballs this time, but all good, so.
I have some, what do you want me to do with it?
No, 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 it it's it's all good, because I I want you to, yeah, I want you to feel the whole experience. Yeah. Alright, so, um, with regulating the breath, you're I really want you to extend the exhales a lot longer than the inhales, let the inhales just come in naturally. And just really extend the exhales longer and longer and longer and longer. You're still gonna have all the locks in place when we get to the silence, alright, and we're gonna go for uh, twelve, twelve. Uh, we're gonna go for about forty-eight, forty-eight breaths in total. Alright, or more, depending. Let's 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 just feel feel it out and let's go from there, alright, so eyes gazing, tongue stretched to the roof of the mouth. We're gonna start in three, two, one, let's go. Regulate the breath, swallow, 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 breathe silently where you can't hear the breath at all, deeper and deeper exhales. Eyes still gazing, tongue on the roof, still squeeze on every exhale. With every breath, I'm accepting more reasons to smile. Thank you all for sharing the breath.
Thank you, that was transformative. Um I could feel in the beginning, I was like kind of forcing the the sound and the smile, right, like you kind of like just doing it and then. By the middle, I couldn't contain it, like I was ready to bust up laughing. Out of just happiness, like in the middle, but I was like, we gotta keep going, right? So it's crazy, that's that's amazing. Thank you. Thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you, brother.
For joining.
Does anyone have any questions or do you have any questions for me?
No, no, I just wanna say, um everybody here, um later on, I'm doing a live all about. Internal hygiene specifically, we're gonna get into urine enemas, you know, it's Super Bowl Sunday, so we gotta go deep on them.
Wait, it it's it's Super Bowl Sunday today?
Yeah, I think it is. Yeah, I didn't even know, I didn't know either, man, but yeah, you know, whatever. Apparently, there's some kind of thing today, but we're gonna talk about urine enemas, so.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, so thank you, thank you, everybody, no, uh no questions, if I do, I will hit you up, of course, so. Oh, yeah, that you build that up, that one.
Yeah, you you build, yeah, eh like any muscle, you know, all these locks, it it gets better over time.
Keep keep practicing.
Yeah, alright, brother, thank you for having me on, thank you all for sharing the breath, peace.
Peace. Alright, you guys, so thank you for joining, I have about fifteen orders to pack. Alright, I'm I'm my my goal is to pack all the orders I have today, I've been spending all week making the tea, making the capsules, making the sample boxes. Um now we're gonna pack all of them in one go, you see how we do these small batches, alright? Um so I'm gonna pack, I'm gonna get into packing that as soon as I'm done with the packing. Um and the shipping, we're gonna get into another live where we're gonna talk about internal hygiene. So um I will see you guys in a few hours, alright, peace, you know, as we do this full-time thing, alright, peace out, you guys.